Je suis Jeanette Hoekar, la présidente de la Commission sur l'écologie et la présidence de la présidence. Nous avons travaillé ensemble sur cela. Si vous voulez, s'il vous plaît, allez voir le tableau de streaming. Ce n'est pas rude si vous voulez aller voir ça. Donc, ce soir, c'est un peu différent. Ce n'est pas une conférence d'experts qui vous parle. Ça fait vraiment du dialogue. Et le modérateur de ce soir est Maddy Bott, qui nous avons choisis parce qu'elle croit en un bon combat et aime vraiment entendre son défense. Nous avons décidé de l'avoir. On y est tous autour de la salle. Nous avons des membres de la Commission sur l'écologie, de la Commission sur la conservation. Nous avons Corey, le crew, et le tableau de streaming. Nous avons Chris Camp, le directeur exécutif de la Région de la Vindée. Nous avons Hans, qui vient de...
Gbien, extension.
Gbien, extension, merci. Y a-t-il autre chose?
Road crew?
Road, oh oui, désolée. En particulier avec les fumées. Je dois revenir. Le fumée était: "Nous invitons le crew de la route. Nous invitons les fumées des gens qui savent vraiment beaucoup sur la ville." C'était vraiment amusant de passer avec Jeanette. Ce gars a tellement de connaissances sur les routes et des pensées sur comment nous gérer les routes. Nous sommes très heureux qu'il soit ici. Il regarde là où il est. Voilà. Je m'arrête. Merci.
Merci Jeanette. Merci Guilford d'inviter à parler de la dégoutte, des routes et de la démocratie. Parce que l'une des choses qui sont très excitantes à Vermont, je pense, est que l'un jour par an, les gens ordinaires deviennent législateurs. La réunion de la ville nous donne cette opportunité de dire aux officials de la ville ce que nous pensons qu'ils devraient faire. C'est un gros problème. C'est ce que je pense être un grand ressource de Vermont. D'autres états l'ont. Je ne veux pas juste entrer dans le froid de Vermont, mais... (Rire) Parce que c'est assez génial que nous ayons cette capacité. Et donc, je suis curieuse. Avant de commencer, nous ne parlons pas de dégoutte. Je suis curieuse de ce que vous tous voulez savoir sur les dégouttes. Nous avons beaucoup de gens ici qui parlent des routes. C'est la saison de parler des routes. Mais avant de le faire, vous avez juste eu une réunion de la ville. Je veux juste que vous sachiez que Putney a duré presque huit heures. Je n'ai pas besoin de pensées. Mais on se met à dire le point. Comme modérateur de la ville, ça continue et continue. Donc, je suis curieuse. Guilford, combien de temps avez-vous eu pour la réunion de la ville?
Trois heures.
Trois heures!
Trois et demi heures.
Vous avez fait tout votre business en trois et demi heures?
Avant le déjeuner.
Avant le déjeuner? Oh mon Dieu. Je vais revenir à Putney et dire: "Vous le mettez en marche? Pouvez-vous aller un peu plus vite parce que nous avons commencé à 10? Je n'ai pas sorti de là jusqu'à la moitié de six. Et j'étais en train de pleurer un peu. Je n'ai pas besoin de pensées. Je veux juste être clair sur ça. Mais j'étais pleurose à l'intérieur. Ça faisait longtemps. Donc, y a-t-il quelque chose de contentious? Si vous ne me dérangez pas de parler de la bêtise? Rien de contentious?
Nous avons eu des dégouttes.
L'an dernier, il y en a eu.
Vous avez eu? Ok, oui.
Ce n'est pas toujours ça.
Ce n'est pas toujours ça. Et pouvez-vous me dire votre nom?
Nancy.
Nancy. Voulez-vous que je dise l'an dernier ce qui a été contentious?
Je n'y ai pas été l'an dernier.
Oh! Les rumeurs l'ont dit.
Je l'ai entendue beaucoup.
Oui.
Une chose la plus contentious était de se déplacer le samedi.
Chuck dit que se déplacer le samedi était... Ça fait une grande différence. Oui, oui. Et ça peut prendre assez de temps. Parce que quand vous changez des choses qui sont tellement grandes, changez des traditions, c'est super, super difficile. Donc, ce dont nous allons parler ce soir, parce que je pense que c'est vraiment intéressant. Nous avons une réunion de la ville. Nous avons un vrai engagement pour la démocratie au État dans le sens où les gens ordinaires ont le droit de dire aux officials de la ville un jour par an ce qu'ils pensent qu'ils devraient faire. C'est vraiment un gros problème. Oui, pouvez-vous me dire votre nom?
Oui, mon nom est Debbie.
Debbie.
Nous devrions avoir ça tout le temps. Nous avons ça avec ce select board meeting. Nous venons toujours, je veux dire, nos officiers nous votent. Nous sommes en fait des gens qui ont toujours l'autorité, pas les gens qui sont là en disant, vous savez, "Salut".
Oui, oui.
Nous les conseillons. Ils ne nous disent pas ce qu'ils doivent faire.
Donc Debbie, tout le monde entend ce que Debbie dit? Debbie dit: "Le select board ne peut nous dire ce qu'il doit faire?" Nous votons eux. Nous allons à leurs réunions. Nous leur disons ce que nous pensons qu'il faut faire. Et que c'est crucial. Absolument. Ça s'appelle la souveraineté populaire. Et c'est une chose clé de la démocratie, c'est que les gens sont l'autorité ultime. Donc, oui, Debbie, vous comprenez totalement ça. C'est ce que la démocratie signifie. Et parfois, les gens peuvent oublier ça. Mais ici à Vermont, nous avons cette capacité, cette capacité. Très bien. Donc, c'est un gros problème que vous tous avez ces habitudes comme Debbie, les habitudes de venir à la réunion de la ville, venir à des réunions publiques, dire ce que vous voulez dire, et être entendu, puis essayer de trouver des choses avec d'autres personnes. Parce que cette compétence va être très utile quand il s'agit de la dégoutte. Parce que les dégouts se passent. Essayer de trouver quoi faire. Les catastrophes naturelles ont tendance à être très difficiles pour le cerveau humain. Nous commençons à... Surtout si vous regardez, et certains d'entre vous peut-être pendant Irene ou certains d'entre ces autres pluies, que ce soit à Guilford ou d'autres endroits, mon hypothèse est que vous avez vu des choses qui ont rendu difficile de décider de quoi faire. C'est quelque chose à propos de la nature du désastre. Donc, le fait que Guilford se réunisse, dit à l'autre quoi faire, sort de la rigueur qui se produit souvent avec le désastre, et commence à trouver: "Quoi devrions-nous faire ensemble?" C'est un très gros problème. Vous n'êtes pas juste passifs. Vous êtes des citoyens actifs dans votre ville. Et c'est clé. Oui, absolument. C'est ce qui est clé. Surtout quand nous pensons à des dégouts, les routes étant dégoutées. Si vous avez ces compétences, c'est une chose magnifique. Donc... Une autre pièce, et certains des gens qui ont été invités à nous rejoindre ont peut-être des questions à ce sujet. Mais à cause de la dégoutte continue, les routes étant dégoutées, beaucoup d'argent va dans les fixations des routes. À Putney, j'ai été dit à une réunion d'information que c'était environ un million de dollars pour fixer les routes de terre. Je devrais vraiment revenir et vérifier deux fois. C'est une grande quantité parce que notre budget de voie est un peu au-dessus de cette quantité. Mais quand les routes sont dégoutées et les pluies arrivent, en juillet 2024, beaucoup de routes ont été dégoutées. À Plainfield, à Vermont, la ville a été dégoutée. À la ville du bas, en juillet 2024, en juillet 2023. Ce genre de: "Que devrions-nous faire?", a été pris soit par l'assurance nationale, soit par les législateurs de l'État, soit par qui que ce soit. Les gens commencent à dire: "Nous devons trouver quelque chose", parce que ça va être difficile. Les villes peuvent-elles faire partie de cette discussion? Je veux dire oui. Surtout si vous êtes une ville, vous pouvez faire votre réunion de la ville dans moins de trois heures. Certainement, vous pouvez venir ensemble et commencer à trouver: "Ok, qu'est-ce que nous devrions faire à propos du fait que les routes sont dégoutées? Les eaux lavent certaines parties de la propriété des gens." Donc, c'est ce que nous allons penser ce soir ensemble. Donc, j'ai une question pour vous. Qu'est-ce que vous tous voulez savoir sur la dégoutte? Sur les routes étant dégoutées? Donc, je vais d'abord prendre une série de questions pour essayer de vous donner un sens de ce que vous pensez que vous devez savoir pour commencer à répondre à certaines de ces questions. Y a-t-il une question? Comme: "Qu'est-ce que vous voulez savoir?" Oui.
Est-ce que le crew de la route sent qu'ils maintiennent la pollution?
Très bien, donc voici une question. Nous allons faire entrer le crew de la route sur ça, mais une bonne question. Je vais d'abord prendre une série de questions, puis nous allons l'ouvrir. Peux-je changer ça? Qu'est-ce que le crew de la route, qu'est-ce que le crew de la route signifie?
Ou: "Est-ce qu'ils peuvent garder?"
Est-ce que le crew de la route? D'autres questions? D'autres questions? Oui, en fait Veronica.
Veronica.
Oh, je t'ai dit Veronica. Veronica!
Ça arrive souvent.
Oui.
Bien, je sais que c'est une longue question, et donc vous pouvez trouver comment la réduire. Je veux dire, nous avions des semaines de pluie horrendes.
Oui.
Et le crew de la route à Guilford, je veux dire, le commissaire de la route a pris des décisions, avec, je suppose, la sélection, pour investir dans la composition des routes pour que nous ne perdions pas nos roues chaque saison de pluie comme nous l'avons fait. Et je suis curieuse de comment il y a eu ces changements et comment ils sont arrivés.
Et j'aime que ce soit comme une composition. Quand a-t-on changé la recette des routes? C'est ce que nous avons trouvé? Ok. C'est correct? Je cherche à être poétique. Quand a-t-on changé la recette des routes? Parce que ça semble comme... Veronica, vous dites: "Ça a marché."
Oui, ça a marché.
Oui. Donc, ça serait bien de savoir. Quelque chose d'autre que vous vouliez savoir sur les routes ou la dégoutte en général? Oui, pouvez-vous me dire votre nom?
Virginia.
Virginia.
Quelle est la coûté de ces élastiques de pierre très élégants sur les côtés de la route?
Virginia veut savoir sur la coûté des pires. Oui.
Je veux savoir si le couvercle doit être remplacé. Est-ce que le crew de la route décide quel couvercle il faut mettre? Et pourquoi?
Quel couvercle? Et pourquoi? C'est une question technique très difficile. Oui, est-ce Jeff?
Jeff, oui.
Oui.
Qu'est-ce que les résidents peuvent faire pour aider à prévenir la dégoutte?
Oh! Et avez-vous quelque chose à votre avis Jeff?
Je pense à la pollution et juste... Oui, juste si il y a des choses que nous pouvons faire à mesure que nous avons prévu pour le futur à faire soit sur nos propriétés, soit où nos propriétés se rencontrent dans les routes de la ville. Et oui, comment nous pouvons aider.
Très bien. Donc, qu'est-ce que les résidents peuvent faire contre la pollution? Dave, le road, qu'est-ce que les résidents font? Oui, quel est votre nom?
Dave.
Dave.
Je suis curieux. Ce n'est pas vraiment la route, mais la dégoutte. Est-ce que la définition d'une dégoutte de cent ans, une dégoutte de cent ans pour laquelle, je suppose, les planificateurs utilisent le plan?
Oui.
Est-ce que ça change? Et si oui, à quel point? Et comment les planificateurs et le crew de la route adaptent-ils à cette change?
Oui, c'est David.
Oui.
Vous voulez juste décrire un peu pour les gens ce que... Cette zone de dégoutte de cent ans, c'est souvent ce que les gens...
Vous savez, une dégoutte de cent ans est l'estimation de la pire dégoutte que vous allez avoir une fois par cent ans.
C'est le risque de 20% de pluie dans plusieurs années.
Ok.
Je déteste le nom de dégoutte de cent ans parce que ça arrive.
Ok, c'est un bon nom.
Ça correspond à la dégoutte de cent ans.
Oui. Donc, est-ce que ça change?
Est-ce que ça change? Ok. Ça pourrait arriver plus tard. Mais la zone de dégoutte de cent ans, c'est le changement dans... Et c'est soit législation, soit... Parce que c'est un terme que vous avez.
C'est une thèse.
Oui.
Je veux dire, c'est un calcul qui est fait. Et il est toujours là.
Calculations, thèse, ok. Est-ce que ça nous donne assez pour commencer? Je peux enlever ce papier pour faire plus. Y a-t-il quelqu'un qui a une grosse? Oui.
Je me demande si... Non, je ne peux pas. Je me demandais si les routes de terre sont plus résistantes à la pollution, aux dégouttes et autres.
En fait, une autre question. Quelle est la moins coûteuse à remplacer?
Paye, dirt, dirt. Et j'ai un signe d'un dollar derrière. Oui. Paye ou dirt, un signe d'un dollar, quelle est la plus coûteuse?
Sure.
Parce que c'est la clé. Le bleu me permet de mettre plus sur mon papier. Oui, pouvez-vous me dire votre nom?
Mon nom est Paul.
Paul.
Nous avons un chemin qui a beaucoup d'eau et de dégoutte de temps en temps. Et l'intersection de notre chemin et de la route est toujours, je ne l'appellerai pas contentious, mais c'est intéressant. Et je me demande comment la ville et moi pouvons être plus efficaces en collaborant autour de l'intersection de chemin et de route de la rue.
Oui. Et Paul, c'est si proche de ce que Jeff parlait. Qu'est-ce que les résidents peuvent faire? Dans les chemins, ça va être un gros problème. Donc, j'aime la parole que vous avez utilisée. Vous avez dit contention?
Oui.
Oui, contention. Il y a une contention. Il y a un peu de combat dans le chemin et la route. Et il devient un peu chaud là-bas. Chemin et route, contention. Quelque chose d'autre? Oui, Chris.
Est-ce que vous tendez à regarder en arrière la dégoutte, ou êtes-vous anticipé à la pire dégoutte qui vient?
Je suis désolée.
Est-ce que vous tendez à regarder en arrière les dégouts que vous avez? Ou êtes-vous aussi anticipé à la perte plus importante et à une intensité plus grande de dégoutte qui vient?
Ok, donc c'est une bonne question. Il y a une question qui est: "Qu'est-ce que nous pouvons faire? Qu'est-ce que nous pouvons voir si nous regardions en arrière? Et qu'est-ce que nous avons vu quand nous regardions en arrière?" Et puis j'ai un autre qui est là. Quel est votre nom?
David.
David.
Je me demande s'il y a des mesures qui peuvent être prises pour retarder le dégoutte durant le pic. Vous savez, traiter les pluies avec des barrières ou des choses comme ça. Ou juste ralentir le flux d'eau pendant le pic.
Retarder le dégoutte durant le pic. Quand il y a un pic, il va être beaucoup plus dommage qu'une pluie ou quelque chose de ce type. Oui. Voyons ce que nous avons avec ces questions. Et puis, si nous devons passer par ce processus avec plus de questions, nous allons commencer à le faire. Y a-t-il qui veut répondre? Ce n'est pas en ordre. Ça va aller en termes de où il est sur mon papier. La question sur paye ou terre. Je regarde Jimmy.
Je suis en train. Je peux aller... Je suis Jim Freeman.
Oh, désolé.
Je suis désolé. Je suis Jim Freeman. Je suis le nouveau superviseur de la voie. Il a pris over depuis 50 ans, quelques mois avant. Donc, comme vous pouvez l'imaginer, il faut un village pour garder une voie en fonction. Il y a beaucoup de connaissances et d'expérience autour de ça. Et je prendrai tout ça. Et l'expérience compte, comme dans tout. Donc, j'ai un retire d'une voie juste à côté juste pour m'aider à passer cette réunion.
Est-ce que c'est Alan?
C'est Alan Bellbell.
Y a-t-il quelqu'un?
Donc, paye ou dirt? Je n'ai pas de chiffres actuels. Nous pourrions débattre de ça. Il y a... Il faudrait vraiment faire un coût bénéfique parce que ça ne va pas se réduire aux dollars et à des centimes. Les coûts initiaux de la pavaison sont grands. Ils ne pourraient probablement pas passer par cette audience. Je veux dire, donc cette ville a environ 86 miles de route avec 14 miles de pavaison. Donc, ça laisse des dents de 60-60 de terre, qui nous maintiennent, vous savez, encore et encore. À propos de... Donc, c'est difficile de dire. Ce n'est pas une réponse simple. Vous savez, voulez-vous dépenser un peu d'argent encore et encore? Chaque fois que il pluie en été, si nous obtenons une centimètre de pluie, nous rentrons dans la route. C'est du temps et de l'argent. Diesel, moteur, blades, etc. Si vous payez ces routes, qui est esthétiquement, beaucoup de cette audience ne voudrait pas. Ils aiment Guilford et ils veulent conduire une route country en été et en automne, même en hiver juste en saison de pluie. Donc, le coût de la pavaison, si vous prenez ça pendant 20, 25 ans, vous pourriez avoir un bon argument. À propos des dégouttes et de la dégoutte, vous pouvez mettre tout le pluie que vous voulez dans la pavaison. Vous contrôlez où l'eau vient de la pavaison. Vous ne allez pas manger par la route. Donc, c'est une question compliquée. Et oui, les sentiments et les émotions vont définitivement jouer un rôle. Il y a... Ça a déjà été fait ici à Guilford où Heinckberg Road a un mile et demi, trois quarts de terre. Et ça a été voté pour finir la pavaison pour diverses raisons. Une vitesse, mais avec la vitesse que je vois les gens sortir sur ces routes de terre, je ne sais pas si ça compte si c'est de la terre ou de la pavaison. Il y a des véritables conducteurs ici. Et partout. Je veux dire, je ne prends pas en compte personne. Donc...
Et je vais demander à plus de gens sur cette question. Mais vous nous avez donné juste cette question à propos de si on paye, si on va avec la terre. Parce que vous avez dit que ça fait un peu d'émotion. Les gens sont attachés à la façon dont ils ont l'habitude. Il y a aussi des peurs que les gens vont plus vite. J'ai eu la vie à Heinckberg quand c'était de la terre. Et puis il a été payé. Et c'était... C'était une grande change. La morgue était plus propre quand vous avez à laisser tomber.
Oui, le poudre. Oui, donc selon votre angle, c'est important pour vous. Et bien sûr, c'est le checkbook aussi. Tout le monde: "Comment pouvons-nous faire mieux, plus efficacement et obtenir ce que nous voulons?" C'est une question compliquée là-bas.
Oui.
Et je ne veux pas tenir ce mic toute la nuit. Je veux dire, je peux aller tout droit dans cette liste, mais... Certes, laissez que tout le monde ait une chance.
Alan, vous voulez ajouter quelque chose à ça? Sur les payses ou la terre?
Qu'est-ce que vous pensez que c'est plus coûteux ou mieux?
Je préfère la terre.
La terre, ok.
C'est la morgue là-bas.
Il y a des gens dans la salle qui veulent que nous sachions les prix. Juste parce qu'ils sont là avec le tableau de streaming, avez-vous des pensées sur paye ou dirt?
Well, paye est clairement mieux pour le waterfall. Comme ça.
Paye des routes va produire moins de sennèt en Vermont. Les sennets sont moins pollués en Vermont Sud. Mais évidemment, il y a toujours des intérêts concurrents quand nous faisons ces décisions. Comme la route que les gens veulent conduire ou vivre. Donc, c'est juste une pièce de l'équation.
Waterfall, Chris?
Je vais ajouter. Je pense que... Vous êtes d'accord avec moi sans le mic?
Oui.
Ok. Donc, une autre chose. Enfin, en fin de compte, c'est le système entier, non? Ce n'est pas seulement la surface des routes. C'est vos dits. Vous y mettez le bon endroit où vous avez le rire. Vous prenez l'énergie de l'eau qui va descendre la colline. Vous avez des dams dans les dits pour ralentir les choses. Mais la chose principale est que vous ne voulez pas le coup de bord. Le coup de bord de la surface de la route. Et donc, vous pouvez avoir une belle route pavée si vous n'avez pas les dits corrects. Des dits plus en forme de U plutôt que de V. Si ça coupe ça, votre pavaison va directement dans le ditch. Donc, vraiment, c'est... C'est vraiment comme comment le système fonctionne ensemble. Mais je dirai que en 2021, donc nous avons... La Région de la Vindée organise des réunions régulières de la route. Vous pouvez aller à ces choses.
Je vais.
Ok, bien. Mais je me souviens que en 2021, je ne sais pas si vous vous souvenez, c'était comme si nous avions ici ce que Northern Vermont avait l'an dernier, qui était: "Nous étions incroyablement sec. Et il y avait des pluies après pluie après pluie." Ça m'a choqué parce que je savais que si nous avions un système tropical, toutes les ventes étaient offertes. Et nous l'avons fait en 2021. C'était l'une de ces pluies folles de quatre et demi centimètres en une heure et demie. Et nous avions de l'eau qui courait à travers le paysage de manières que, vous savez, les Vermontiens de la vie ici n'avaient jamais vu auparavant. Ça allait dans les maisons de manières que nous n'avions pas vues. Ça venait, vous savez, des sources intermittentes, juste des drainage, poussant ça, mettant des murs dans les maisons et les voitures. Incroyablemente polluée. Mais je me souviens aussi de cette année, Jeff Nugent, un de nos employés, planificateur GIs, fait beaucoup de choses avec le crew de la route. Et juste en conversations avec eux autour de la pollution des routes. Ils étaient... Pour eux, c'était comme... L'intensité de ces pluies régulières, bien moins celle qui s'est produite, je pense que c'était le 21 juillet de cette année. Les crews de la route étaient un peu... Pas traumatrisés en overstantissant, mais comme... C'était juste une réparation perpétuelle des routes. C'était comme une saison de pluie chaque fois que une de ces pluies venait. Et ils avaient du mal à le maintenir. Je ne sais pas ce que c'était à Guilford, mais je sais que ça a l'air de Newthing, Townsend, Ward's Road. Il y a ce vélo qui se frappe toujours. Mais c'était vraiment difficile. Et donc, il y avait une conversation qui se passait. "Peut-être que nous devrions payer", parce que c'était vraiment difficile de rester au sommet des routes polluées par les pluies et les dits qui étaient coupés. Et l'autre problème que vous aviez, c'était les chemins, les chemins steep sans dits, poussant les routes de la ville parce que, dans certains cas, toute la cheminée allait sortir dans la route de la ville. Et donc, c'était une question que vous aviez aussi. Donc, je vais vous le poser. Je ne vais pas trop profondément en parler, mais vraiment, c'est comment toutes ces choses se rencontrent.
Oui, elles se rencontrent. Oui. Et donc, ce que vous avez mentionné à propos de la dégoutte de la route étant surprenante quand il y a pluie après pluie après pluie, c'est notre question qui vient ensuite. Faites la route de la route bouger. Et je sais qu'il y a quelqu'un de la partie de la police aussi. Puisz-vous juste parler un peu de la façon de prendre votre véhicule sur les routes? Dirt contre paye? Et puis je vais revenir à Tim.
Oui.
Quel est votre nom? Désolée.
Jared de la police. Et c'est le chef adjoint. Ça joue un rôle avec nous aussi. Comme vous venez de dire, la taille du véhicule, le type de call, selon ce que nous avons besoin de mettre en place et où pour l'équipement. Un feu en building versus un appel médical versus, vous savez, nous avons besoin d'un pick-up, d'une ambulance. Donc, nous devons travailler avec le département de la voie et les contractors locaux pour essayer de nous aider parce que nous nous rapprochons selon où nous allons.
Très bien. Vous avez des pensées sur la paye ou la terre? Si vous étiez roi à Guilford, vous vouliez payer, vous pouvez prendre votre équipement. Non? Je sais que c'est une popularité, mais en cas de roi par jour?
Paye est mieux parce que nous n'avons pas à laver les troupes aussi.
Oui. Sean? Et puis nous allons revenir à notre responsable de la police. Sean.
Je veux juste dire, je me souviens de Irene très bien. C'était une expérience traumatique. Et vous savez, ça ne ferait aucun difference. Halifax avait beaucoup de routes pavées allant vers le West. Toutes. Donc, elles étaient toutes. Vous savez, et beaucoup de routes à Guilford, elles étaient toutes. So, you know, the bottom of our hill was a house and that house got put on an island because, in a couple hours. So I tried to calculate how many cubic yards and I said, well, maybe it's 400, 500 yards, 500 yards or feet long, 70 feet wide and 70 feet deep. That's like 9,000 yards. So that's 500 plus 16 yard truckload. So they're, they're in synthesis, I think, that doesn't matter what you do, it's just gonna, we're gonna be cooked. And they come with such frequency now. And now the FEMA up in the air, I'm worried and pessimistic about the outcome.
See, this point that when there's so much water and there's gonna be more water, and many of you saw firsthand what Irene could do. And for them to imagine another one coming, that's hard to figure like, what can we do? I just sort of want to hold that, yes, that's gonna be one of the difficult things about what kind of decisions are you gonna make and not give up because whoa, everything, all that good work. You're right, the paved roads and Halifax are gone. Yeah. So, but we're going back to also, but the fire truck could be cleaner. So hold on to that too. Debbie?
I'm, I'm not sure, I'm sure it fits in, sorry. I know this question fits in somewhere there, but you, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name, but you get brought up about the runoff of the roads.
Corey.
So, thank you, Corey. I'm wondering how the dirt roads are treated with what chemicals versus the paved roads? Because the paved roads, there's salt and there's sodium chloride, is it? That's dropped on the paved roads.
Calcium chloride.
Calcium chloride, thank you. That would be awful if it was sodium chloride. And I'm wondering, that those chemicals run off into the rivers more than they would if you were to have a dirt road? So I'm questioning that because that's more harmful to the aquatic life.
Great. So Corey, do you want to just take that?
No, I don't have an answer to that. I'd be curious to hear though.
Yeah.
I don't know what you think, the different kind of treatment services.
So the question about cleaner in terms of water runoff, was cleaner? But that might take some more research to actually like figure out what that would look like. So important point.
I could probably answer that.
Okay, great. And then I'm gonna ask you the second question, but let's go with the water runoff on the roads.
Okay. Well, I can't quantify, but I would say in general, you know, salt, the salt eats all our vehicles. It eats concrete. We have to use it on the pavement. There's no way around it. We try to use the right amount as best, you know, as best as possible. And even the same road will have cold spots. So if you see a little salt laying in one spot and the rest might be still a little slick, it's because we went down the road. You're doing the best you can on an average and less is better. We use calcium chloride in the liquid form to harden up the dirt roads in the summer. So you get that. So either way, you're gonna get treatment on either one.
Salt on pavement, calcium chloride on dirt. Yeah.
Correct. And that will harden that dirt road up if you do it right and the weather cooperates. Again, excessive rain, which we give is more of a climate change issue, will poach all that thing up and break that seal. But otherwise, you'll, the dirt will get as hard as this floor. If it's, it'll be smooth and it'll be great. You know, everybody would want dirt if it worked that way all the time. As far as when it washes away, how much pollution of either one? That's a tough one because if, if you eat the calcium out of the dirt, it means you have so much excessive rain. In many businesses, they call it the solution, pollution solution. There's so many gallons of water that you're per million. I couldn't really answer that. But it's generally accepted that salt on pavement causes more pollution than the calcium on the dirt.
Yeah. And so the gentleman in the back also wants to jump in on this. And then we're gonna ask you how you're doing in terms of.
Some, this is a full jewel and this is some time ago, I read a bunch of, actually in Vermont, they did runoff testing to see what happened off of paved roads, parking lots, gravel roads, gravel parking lots. It turns out that the paved roads have more heavy metals and, and the bacteria, whatever, fecal bacteria kind of stuff. And, and the roads have more mineral runoff. That was the conclusion after that, after that study.
Very great. Well, it sounds like there's some great research out there so we can like think about what actually, because that's gonna be a hard decision. It's not gonna be one perfect decision, one horrible decision. No, it's gonna be everybody trying to get at, should you decide to pay the road, what are gonna be the trade offs? Well, people wanted to know, can you guys keep up? That was a question that came up. That feels like a really important one, as a unique question.
Most of, most of the time we can keep up, not hour to hour, but yeah, we replace certain culverts every year. We always upsize the new standard typically, nothing less than a 15 inch culvert goes in. We used to do eight, 10s and 12s. We go to 15 or 18 or larger. The state sets a standard, which the town in Guilford has accepted. They give us a guideline and they will help you. The state has, and William Regional has a lot of people and resources to help you decide what you need to upgrade to. And so that's very, they do a lot of work for us that, that we would never get that knowledge on our own. And experience counts too. If you, you know, if you had a 15 inch culvert and it's continuously backed up, you're gonna bump that thing up. And there's, there's a huge volume difference between an 18 and a 24. You wouldn't think, it doesn't look that much bigger, but it is. And I can catch a couple of these, the stone line ditches.
Yeah.
Which is a state standard, they feel like this is the best way to go for what we're trying to deal with and they work really well. They work better on pavement. If you come down Route 9, because that water comes up clean without as much sediment, our dirt roads tend to clog them and we're gonna have to address cleaning those, you know, after, but even in the winter, when everything's frozen up and everything, if you look at the culvert and you see water running between those rocks, it's really a good, it's really, it really has been a good thing. And as far as expense, which she asked, I can't give you a dollar amount, but the state wants us, is encouraging every town to do it. So typically, they do an 80/20. So anytime, you know, I'm trying to.
80 from the state, 10 from the town.
From the town. And anytime anybody offers me an 80/20, 90/10, that's encouragement enough for me to do it. So they're, the state's very supportive of the ideas they have in addressing these issues.
So that's with pavement, but they're, they're also happening on dirt roads as well.
Correct.
Yeah. Before I think of other questions, anybody else who wants to weigh in on providing information about, stone gutters? Any thoughts on stone gutters? Yes?
I don't have anything except I feel as though I heard that there are some drawbacks to stone gutters, that there are, I'm Nancy, that there are some drawbacks to stone gutters, but I'm not, I'm wondering what they are.
Yeah. The rumor has it that stone gutters can be a problem. Anybody want to speak to the rumors?
To his point, they require some maintenance. For the ones that get clogged up with sediment, they're not as effective. So then they've gotta go out and dig back up the ripraps, shake it, put it back in town. So it requires more maintenance, but, but roughness, right, it's just like, you know, creates friction basically in the water, right? And then as the sediment comes dropping out of it, it slows the water down a bit and that's why the state's recommending it. I know among the road crews, I'm sure there's still differences of opinion, but I think once they saw the function, there was, well, there was some resistance at first, but I think generally speaking, they've done a positive change and then also go into more to the standard. U-shaped ditches, right, as opposed to V, right, V-shaped, right, it's concentrating the water, it speeds the water up. And so it can cause more, more cutting downward. Whereas if it's a U, right, it spreads that water out more, it takes some of the energy out of it. If you have the ripraps in there, right, it can start helping the sediment drop out, creates that roughness and can slow it down. It's not gonna make a difference like in a hundred year storm, fifty year major down, you're still gonna have issues, right? But it's more of the regular rains where it can really don't make a difference. Do you agree with that or?
Absolutely.
Well, the other thing, the U-shaped is, it increases infiltration for the low runoff calculations. Heavy rain, like you say, doesn't make any difference.
We have a feedback in a little while.
I'm Steve Limpie. For any of you who missed the SLAC board meeting on Monday night, it was a very lightning question that came up. This past summer, fall, on Stage Road, there was a lot of ditching done by MD3 and the town and everybody else. And it was a major project and it was very impressive how it was done and the length of time and everybody thought, this is great. So where do you think the washout was three weeks ago? You know, right on Stage Road. So the other night at the SLAC meeting, somebody asked, how is it that you do all that work and then there's a washout? Can I take the liberty of telling them what, and you can correct me if I'm wrong?
You can do that, so Jim?
Jimmy took the mic and he said, it's just, the rain, rain in the winter is a, is a road foreman's worst nightmare. And especially when we got a lot of snow that's hardened up. As much as the town tried to knock the banks back, there's only so far you can go to knock the banks back off the road. So when the rain comes down, it runs on the bank. It doesn't go in the ditch because the ditch is full of the stone that is now a snowbank and it runs into the road and then washes the road up because that's not where it was ditched. It was ditched where the ditch is supposed to be. So the best, the best laid plans of which one is the best, which one can happen, this, and all of a sudden Mother Nature goes, no, I don't do this. You know, you're gonna lose this road because of this. Is that a fair explanation to it?
It is. And I will just, I will just add that two men with shovels shoveled that snow and put the water back into the ditch. It was running parallel to it. And that stone line ditch was perfect. So as far as, was that a good idea to do that hill? And MT3s, I'll take the time to say they were excellent. They were fast and efficient and there's, and the ditching was excellent. We put the water back in the ditch and it worked perfectly. Rain, rain in the winter, that's my, that's my like signature line. That's our worst climate change part and it's, it's a weather event.
Do you have the rain in the winter? Why that happens, we need two men with shovels to make sure, we've missed the verdict, it was a ditch.
Well, it's your press, you know, the ditching was done.
Yeah.
Keep it where it belongs, it's just hard, it's a challenge.
Got it.
Not supposed to rain in the winter.
We'll have to put that upstairs. No more rain in the winter.
Actually, Steve Limpie just answered the question to what would have been my question with all the culvert work on Green River Hill. And then there was the washout, but I just got my answers. And I would also like to commend the fast work in repairing the ditch. But they worked all last summer with putting in the stone ditches and U-culverts. And then it's disappointing to come up through and see that washout and wonder why. But now I know.
Yeah. And you feel better now that you understand that it wasn't because it was badly done or whatever. Wow, does that make a difference? Could hear to the explanation.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Yeah. And that sort of feels very important as the town is trying to figure out, what should we do? Is that you get a chance to ask people very specific questions if you're feeling unhappy about, like all that money went into the culvert, why didn't it hold up? Find out why, know what's necessary? Two men and shovels, I'm gonna remember that word. Always looking for two men and shovels. Miranda?
I just wanted to bring up a sidebar to the road conversation that we're having, which is that Guilford has a very active emergency management team. Jared, Bristol is co-director of our emergency management group. And there's a lot of planning and volunteer work that goes into that. And it's also very people power oriented because we have, I can't remember what we're called, but sort of line leaders for every neighborhood, or we're working on having coordinators for every neighborhood in Guilford so that in planning forward in case of different kinds of emergencies, there are people with communication capacities, especially important in places like so much of Guilford where there's no cell service, to have these radios, to have the know-how and also to have intensive communication within neighborhoods about who has needs, who has skills. So if, when we have to cohere, you know, I think emergencies bring out sadly often the best in people. And Guilford has always come together in terms of emergencies that we have had and Guilfordites are coming together in terms of emergencies that we hope we don't have.
Can I add one thing about that, on that?
Okay, I just want a little time for, give me one quick second. So Miranda, you posed the second question of the evening, which is what do we need to know about each other? And what you're talking about in terms of there's an actual plan in place, is the emergency management, is that a title or?
Hub managers. What is our title? Hub managers.
Hub managers.
Oh, yeah. We have hub managers at.
Ten hubs. The town is divided into ten hubs and each hub has a manager for their local area. And as a manager, your job is to get to know your neighbors at least on paper and then hopefully over time, know them personally so you know what they need, what is happening. And only found, the storm in March of '23 was the worst situation, was six days without power, but no communication about how long it was gonna last. Whether it's gonna be a day or two days or five days. So the communication, we're hoping that it gets to be smoother, less anxiety ridden hurt.
I love this. And so what are you doing when there's no communication? Going door to door?
Yeah. People got all worked up about what's happening because we don't know that, you know, people are anticipating, I have a generator that's gonna run out of propane or it's gonna run out of gas. So just letting people know whether the good or the bad is happening makes a big difference to people, to plan to do something.
Right, right. So this is something in planning right now, so the next time it happens, you guys are ready to go. Yeah. That's beautiful. Chris, I'm gonna give it to you and I know that we're going back and forth and I'll go with you. Is it Paul?
Yeah.
Chris, what you want to say?
Just real quick, so one of the things that's driving this in the region around the state, this paid versus dirt conversation, is this year, this winter, we had that cold winter, so the roads froze. Prior a few years, we're, it was really crazy muddy winter, probably kind of perpetual mud season. And so you can only float a plow so well over a muddy road. And so a lot of the road surfaces are actually getting plowed off into the ditches. And so that costs a lot of money to put everything back to where it needs to be. So that has, and then also, right, roads becoming passable for fuel trucks, fire trucks, other things. So I'm not getting into the paid versus unpaid debate, but that's another factor that's how I'm starting to think about, like if you have especially heavily traveled routes that are critical, like to get fuel, oil and other things to different places, or just the maintenance expense that gets to be so much, sometimes I'm starting to think about, maybe we should pay this because at least then you don't have to worry about if the road's gonna freeze up or not, or not, or safe or not. Because this crazy freeze thaw cycle we've had for the last several years now has just been brutal for the road crews.
Got it. And there's also a woman, the caller, Paula, is the woman that's supposed to be asking?
Hi, my name is Susan. And I wanted to ask Steve, is it appropriate now? Are we planned enough now to put an article in the Gazette about these hubs? Because I for one would like to know who my hub leader is and I'm sure everybody else in the room would like to know too. So are we there yet?
Everything is in progress right now. But the thing you don't want to do is say, oh, we're gonna have a shelter, it's gonna be open and then not have the shelter. So on an emergency situation, the only thing worse than having no information is bad information. So we're trying to get things in place along with Jared and Dan Ingold and Mike and everybody else to make sure what we think will work will actually work. And I can just say, one of the things that's in play right now, just the last day or two is, is doing what's called a tabletop exercise and taking a worst case scenario for a thing like March 23rd, I mean, March 20, anyway, March of '23, when it happened and saying, what would happen? You know, what do we have in place and what do we know, no, we don't have in place. So it's a work in progress and Guilford Gazette article would be great for probably six months from now.
And maybe just for time purposes, I want to end the evening talking about getting, imagining the worst and then seeing what you would do. That's the best thing a town can do to get, to think through the big flubs, another argument when the power goes out for a century or two times. And so having a sense of what that is like is another way that the town can come together to make some of these more difficult decisions around, can we pay, can we not pay? Well, maybe if we all are figuring out how to help each other, we'll have an easier time making those hard decisions. But Paul was waiting and Hans has been waiting. So I guess Paul is, is that, can you call first and then him on?
This isn't about pavement, but, and this is more conjecture than anything, but I heard on the newscast yesterday that there may be an executive order getting rid of FEMA. And I'm wondering how that is going to impact all of this going forward.
Do you want me to speak to that?
Do we have answers? Do we have answers?
So, so yeah, so that was an executive order. We don't know what that means, right? So there's, there's been discussion about, at the height, you know, within this new administration about, does that mean block grants to towns, to states, municipalities, to where the money comes in and then you manage your own disaster? Or does that mean, do, do they actually shift the cost to the municipalities and states and the federal government contributes less? There've been conversations all over the place. What I'm advising towns because of the uncertainty, I think, I think what is, what's on the horizon looks like, fewer federal funds. And so what I, in my latest newsletter, what I'm advising towns is plan to be more self-reliant. And that means put, have your own rainy day fund, literally.
Have your own rainy day.
Rainy day fund. Establish lines of credit before a disaster happens. Select persons have a lot on them. Just by virtue of the fact that you get elected doesn't mean that you're suddenly, like this gene kicks in that where you understand public finance options and bonding and borrowing. And so, you know, get up to speed on that. I'm encouraging every town to send somebody to the fourth annual Capital Improvement Plan Forum that's sponsored by the Vermont Bond Bank will be held in April. I really encourage towns to develop capital improvement plans. A number of towns don't want to do that because the select boards feel like if we have a list of capital projects and best estimates of what the costs are going to be, people will see the numbers and freak out. But the point of a plan isn't necessarily you're going to build that stuff, right? It's just like if you have maintenance on your house or things that you want to do, you come up with your list, you figure out what they're going to cost for, and then you prioritize what you can actually do. But increasingly, I think, you know, the hazard mitigation funding, the vast majority of that that comes to the towns comes after a really nasty disaster. The sunny day funding, which was a building, building, reselling infrastructure and communities funding through FEMA, they just laid off fifty-some percent of those staffs. So I don't know what that means for the funding. But I don't know if the judges have sent them back to work. I'm not getting into all that, but I'm saying the signal was that's going to change. So you may need to, you've got a great, you've got a pretty current, I think Steve, hazard mitigation plan.
Yes.
In Guilford, which has specific risks and specific hazards that could be mitigated. So like look at that, look at your town, your town plan, the road crew, they'll know what the issues are. But even if, even if your capital improvement plan is as simple as a bulleted list, maybe numbered list with best estimates, you know, like especially, so much of it's transportation related, but you may have other things like related to this building, the library, other things. At least come up with a best guesstimate and then a rough prioritization so that you're doing just less ad hoc spending. But I know in the past, we've actually offered to help support towns with capital improvement plan. When we offered to support that, they kind of ran away because of this, this fear. So I would say you as a public, encourage this. Don't be mad at the select board for thinking this stuff through. Because what they're trying to do is do that in your best interest. It doesn't mean that you're going to have to do everything that's on that list. You're just trying to look forward. I think that, like I said, it's really critical because you're going to have to make much more judicious decisions about what you're going to do. And at some point, it may even be things like what culverts do we abandon? What bridges do we abandon? Because we're just not necessarily going to be guaranteed that FEMA is going to come in and replace everything on the backside of a disaster. I'm not saying gloom and doom, but if you do the planning ahead of time, if none of this comes to pass, you're better prepared. If it does come to pass, at least you started thinking it through. Does that help?
I just would imagine the worst case scenario on the side of what do we need to know about each other? We need to know our needs, but we also need to be thinking truthfully, smartly about what funds may or may not be available. And so to imagine the worst case scenario and then figure that out is going to be something important going forward. Hans, thank you.
Thanks. Yeah. So thanks again for inviting me. I actually live in Kentucky and, you know, in this area forever. And I just wanted to speak to something that is a simple idea that's been mentioned a lot. You mentioned Jimmy, that, you know, rain in the winter is the worst nightmare. Because like the water ends up flowing where you don't, channelizing, where you don't want it to go. Because it's capable anywhere else. And I want to address that one idea about, I can't remember someone back there, it's like what, what can we actually do to help, you know, to help the road crew? Jeff wrote this, yeah. And it kind of relates to this idea of like, well, if you can get it go in the ditch, it slows down, the U-shaped ditch, it drops the sediment and the water can even percolate down, you know, and reabsorb. So right there. So what can you do is hold on to your water as best you can and hold on to your sediment as best you can on your property. How many people live on land in Guilford, like where there's land? Okay, probably most people, because I don't think there's many big apartment buildings. How many people actually live on land that isn't exactly flat? Yeah, pretty much everyone. I mean, Guilford ain't flat. I can tell. I think it ain't flat. Ain't flat around anywhere. So, you know, driveways, so if you think of these overland flows, I'm not talking about Irene events. So this, you know, the disaster emergency stuff is a little bit different. But when you get these heavy rains, an inch, two inches, three inches, over the course of a couple hours, there's going to be a lot of water flowing over downhill where it doesn't usually do flow. And when it picks up speed, it picks up the energy. It starts to hold on to sediment. You get cuts, you get, it's whole, the turbulence in the water, the energy is holding up that stuff. And you're like, oh, I gotta, you know, my property, get it out of here. And that's a good instinct, okay? It is a good instinct. And if you want to do good for the whole community, you probably need that instinct. But then you also want to think about what's going to happen with that water before it gets onto the town roads, right? So if you have a culvert and it's channelized, whatever, that'd be your driveway, well, then there should be an opening where the water can spread out after, when the culvert goes under your driveway and then go away from where the road is. And if there's a level surface, so you're thinking through like the water. If you want to spread the water out, you want the energy to slow, you want the sediment to drop out of the water. That's one of the best things you can do in multiple capacities. If you're, if you have forested property, you have logging on your property, there are lots of things you can do to do that very same thing. Just for regular overland flow, for big storms, just slowing the water down, having it spread out. And I just want to say, this is microflooding. That's what's happening. You're actually having, stopping water, having it spill out over something and having it spread out and sink down back in the ground. If everyone in the town does that, it would do an amazing thing for peak flows. It would slow peak flows, it would save the town a ton of money on road repairs if everyone could do that kind of stuff. How do you do it? No, there's no silver bullet. It's got to like look at your property and think about different, you know, where water is going. And we, you know, we'd more than happy to talk to anyone after about this. There are a lot of different techniques and yeah.
So is there a website or something or information available for this idea of microflooding? Is something, that's getting familiar, what you were talking about Jeff.
Well, I guess I was just wondering, like, so as we live in a town with, with not a ton of oversight as far as like that, how if, if someone's going to do something to their property upstream that is not conducive to like, what, they built something, if something happens up there, how is that going to affect someone further down? And how as a community, how we could work together to help prevent like, yeah, this microfloods and things of that sort?
What would that look like? I mean, because here's an idea, and I know we've been going for an hour and I'm always like aware, I don't want people to have to stay out too late. And I do want to end with some of these exciting topics going forward. But let's say that Guilford decided, okay, when we know the water is coming, we're going to need to all be thinking together how to distribute the water so it doesn't create either a driveway contention with the road, it's all going down the driveway, or if there's been a logging or something of that sort. Does anybody have any thoughts, like what might that look like? Doesn't need to be an ordinance. Doesn't need to be the floodwater telling people what to do. But what kind of organization, what kind of group effort might be able to get that information out? Yeah?
Hi, I'm a new resident and I don't have any say here. But if folks who work on the road crews could talk about water bars and what's the other name of that? Water catch, catchment? Talk about that kind of earth movement? Learning how to, you know, take your backhoe and just make a few pop marks in the hill that always gets super wet, just to slow water down. If you could have some kind of workshop around that. I mean, it's definitely a sunny day activity. It's not something that we can do when we have a disaster, but it's something we can playfully do before.
Wow. So an idea like, and then you're going to give me more words Jimmy? What can the road crew teach everybody about doing this water distribution? Or are there other people around who could help Jimmy? Do you have any thoughts on this?
I do. And I can tell you, I would refer you again, the state and when the, when the regional and the state have excellent information, you can educate yourself if you have a laptop. Their, their sites are, sometimes the state one gets a little tricky, you can go around in a circle. But it's excellent and there's so much, there's more information than you would know what to do with. And so they are great support staff, both those organizations do all of us. And I would take advantage of it because they do a ton of work that, A, we would have a hard time absorbing in our budget and, you know, the economy scale are looking out for the whole state, not just one micro area. You certainly, that's an excellent resource. I, I don't know about the rest of it. We could certainly talk about and, you know, I've just never, since I've been here, you know, done something like that. But certainly, we, if I can't, we'll find out who can.
No, it's not like Florida may have somebody, am I right?
I was just going to mention, the conservation district can also be able to resource. Wyndham County, MrCD.org is our website. There's all kinds of resources down there. And then we can also, one of us can come out and look at your property with you and try to help you figure out what resources might be available. Sometimes it's funding, sometimes it's just technical assistance to help you decide what to do. And then in terms of a driveway or rosary workshop, is that sort of what you're?
Yeah.
Right, yeah. There are other conservation districts that have done workshops on that. That's sort of on my bucket list. So I would love to talk more about ones that are in that together.
And I'll add one thing. One of my favorite authors, a guy named Wendell Berry, he's a fellow Appalachian. And I have sent my email signature, it says reconsider, basically reconsider the golden rule of if you live in water, you know, which we all do, which is do unto those downstream what you have those upstream do unto you. And David Suzuki, if you know who he is, he's a natural, his thing is we all live downstream. So when you're on your property, if your inclination is to get water off of your property as fast as you can, you're probably dumping that on somebody else. And so the idea is really to kind of, how do you hold it on your property? Infiltrate it so you're not dumping it on somebody, right? So if you trench something out and you're dumping it downhill, you're probably creating a problem for somebody else. And if you think about it, maybe, maybe it's not, that maybe that single instance isn't going to be that big a deal. But as you, as you do that across the landscape, home after home after home after home, it can actually change the entire infiltration and flow dynamics within an entire watershed. And that's why, you know, when I was in Maryland, I worked in Maryland and other places, people were like, why do we need, why are we required to manage the stormwater that's coming out of our property? We can't do that much. But you multiply that, especially in a more densely populated area, over a lot of different properties, it can utterly change the stream and river and, in this case, like it was a sediment flow in the Chesapeake Bay dynamic. And one last thing on that, I mean, this is something that the conservation district or others are like, you know, even have, you know, you can work with the conservation district and others, like come up with, I mean, this is something like even master gardeners could take on. But like do workshops at one another's homes, go visit each other and see what, see what solutions they're coming up with. The other thing I just want to mention is there's a big issue that we have in Vermont, especially with our glacial soils, is, was called fluvial erosion, channel migration. We call them river corridors, but really what it means is those rivers and streams want to breathe however, you know, they want to go wherever they want to go. They're going to find their, their own equilibrium. Be mindful, right? It's not just that you necessarily live in a flood plain and the water might rise up in your home and go away. That's literally what the ground underneath your home might wash away and your home washes away, it's particularly violent. And you've seen this with your roads, right? I don't know exactly what your exposures are to different homes in Guilford. It depends on what your bedrock situation is. You know, a lot of our hills, they look pretty solid, but really they're just big piles of cobble sand and they're, they're easy to wash away once the landslide, and the slumps and landslides start. So that's another thing to be mindful of. And last but not least, well, don't clear down to your stream bank. I know it may look pretty, it may look like a park, but in the property out, we have in Townsend, previous owner mowed right down to the stream bank edge to make it look kind of park-like. Then we had, Regan apparently kind of started doing some streambank erosion. Then we had the flood in twenty-twenty-one. And I've spent thousands of dollars trying to put vegetation back where it used to be. The conservation district did some planning, spent work with conservancies to help. I've still put thousands of my own, just trying to restabilize that bank. Because ultimately what was going to happen was we were going to lose some nice big trees that hold the soil that ultimately protect our private bridge. You got a lot of private bridges, right? So be real mindful of what you're doing along your stream banks. And last but not least, please don't put stuff down along those. The inclination, right, is to put, sometimes it's straw bales, sometimes it's right, it's like the old equipment or the old truck you park it downhill out of the way and put it along the stream bank. Maybe it's the old propane tank, maybe it's the old roof tin. Whatever it is, you're causing a problem for somebody else that hopefully is going to clog up a culvert or a bridge. And if you get a significant enough impoundment against a bridge or a culvert, you can kill people. Right? Because you, the water clogs it up, it backs it up, it breaks through and it flows down with incredible force. I mean, a crazy example of that is what happened in Ofsted, right? They gang, were called gang culvert, but like seventy feet of fill above it. That got clogged up, it broke through, the water ran down the road in the bank. I think four people died in Ofsted. So that's an extreme example, but we saw, we've seen this all over the state the last couple of years. So what you do on your own property can have a profound impact on your neighbors downstream. So I would just encourage you to adopt that ethic where you're thinking about how water flows and what you're doing while it's still on your property. Didn't mean to do it too long, but that's really important.
Yeah, I think Hans has been waiting and then I'm going to do a time check just to see how, does it go?
Just really quick, just to add on to things like what, I am helping to coordinate this ecological planning lab from UVM. And one of the things we could help do is to, so if you wanted to do a workshop, say, for homeowners on water, you know, floodwater management on their property, whether it's driveways or whatever, and the conservation district's involved and whatever. Well, we at the ecological planning lab could actually help, well, you would coordinate projects that people put together, but we could help you track it over time, like with maps and putting that in. So you sort of keep pace over years of who's, who's done what, if you wanted to do that. Help get interns, help hook up maybe high school interns, like boots on the ground to do work for community service, which they have to do for, for the high school. But there's also UVM interns that have internships that are paid, they could come for a summer, like actually work intensely for two hundred hours, like a crew, you know, it's not, all these things are possible. It just, we got to let through the will and then focus around the narrative of, okay, we could try to do this or however many landowners are kind of coordinating together. So that is a possibility. It's not something we can snap our fingers and do, but like helping coordinate some of that work on conservation.
Yeah, so ecological planning lab, Wyndham Regional Commission and the Wyndham.
Wyndham County Natural Resources Conservation District. We have the worst acronym.
It's very long. I just want to mention, we have lots of guides with one, it's like for individual on your property use of Vermont Guide to Stormwater Management. This just tells you how to get there. But as was already said, Googling is great, but we're also here for workshops. We're all, it's exciting. So we have lots of flyers over here. One is the Vermont Guide to Stormwater Management, which is helpful for talking about on your own property, things to do, what you can do to help your neighbors downstream and help your, you know, yourself with ponding. But as was mentioned, we do workshops and we'd love to come to your house and help you, assist you in whatever way we can. And sometimes that even means coming to people's, we've had a lot of visits where it's a group of individuals. So it's one edge of a stream bank maybe, and all the neighbors are like, yes, there is this one problem, but three people own this area, how do we handle that? We're getting that question a lot recently, so we're happy to come out and help.
Okay, great. Great to have you here.
I just wanted to put a plug in for the conservation. Conservation Commission, that was two or three years ago, they held a great show on impounding your water through the use of beavers and managing the problems, the breather deceiver, to keep road flooding or driveway flooding or yard flooding. It was a great program. I learned a lot. It was put on by our conservation commission, so.
Great. And I'm, I'm working with Patty Smith. The conservation commission is working with Patty Smith.
And I'm working, I'm working with Patty Smith, we're, the conservation commission is working with Patty Smith to get a grant to make Guilford a beaver-friendly town, to deal with beaver road interactions in the best possible way for everybody, so.
Wow, that's great. And Rick, want to say something?
Yeah, this is no way to minimize, you know, what we're facing here in Guilford, but, you know, Guilford is lucky, we don't have steep, steep hills, we don't have, you know, village centers right on the river. You know, you, what happened on the Heisberg Road in Halifax, where the whole group decided to go and push the, push the Green River up onto the road, and what took the road away, or what happened in Plainfield, or what happened in Moretown. And, and to me, that, that means there's less pressure, but it's more of an opportunity to get things right. You know, we can, we can, you know, we can, we can figure this out, and it's manageable.
We have the ability to do it right. We have a hand in the back, and then I'm going to, just as we wrap this up, to get more information about what could already happen, the gentleman in the very back.
I want to go back a little bit to the, the land management part of it. We've mostly been talking about man-made stuff, and man-made manipulations, but we should be also thinking about the larger vegetation on the land. For example, forests slow down water, vaporizes the water, so it goes back in the air, and doesn't actually hit the ground and become part of the problem. We can also develop with shrubs, and if you're doing, if you're prowling up your back 40, you want to make sure you have bare soil and.
Bare soil out of there, which goes back to what Chris was saying as well. Traditionally, we're allowed to come together, I know we didn't get to all the questions on the first side. Are there any things that you feel like you need to know about each other to imagine a terrible thing happening? Because that was one of the things that Steve talked about. Imagine the worst thing that can happen, and then be prepared for it. Is there anything else you feel like you need to know about each other? Miranda?
What's? I had mentioned it earlier, but it isn't just what our needs are, but what skills and willingness, what we have to offer each other as neighbors, and as experts on something.
And Miranda, I love that you say experts on something, because everybody's an expert on something. What, do you have other things in mind besides two guys in a shell? Or one guy in a shell?
Well, what resources you have at your own home. I mean, what tools you have that could be helpful, including communication capacity, what, what your knowledge bases are, whether you know how to do CPR, or stop bleeding, you know, I mean, things of that nature, whether you, have a tractor, whether you are willing to house somebody short-term in an emergency. Those are just a few things off the top of my head, neighborly things. Things that in the tradition of mutual aid in Guilford, you know, from years before we came, people connected with each other, and we still have those inclinations, and can heighten them and strengthen them.
Yeah, great, thank you. Debbie, you have your answer.
I think it's going to be similar to Miranda's, you know, what, we all have something to offer, and more than, more than probably what we think we have, because we're used to doing what we do, and we don't think anything so special about it. But what we do personally is probably really of great benefit to somebody else that might not have it. So, yeah, just to know those things, like, I hunt and fish, so, you know, give me a gun, and I can go kill your food for you and cook it.
That was big.
I mean, and cook it, very well. But, but somebody else has like, somebody else's, and I can do stitches and take, and how to do all that too, and CPR. So, but this is over the years. I had a grandfather that made sure that we could take care of ourselves when we were three. So I have those skills. But my neighbor probably has something else that I don't know. Like, she's got a generator, I don't have a generator. I can cook at her house, you know?
But what is that, like, you need to know each other well enough to say, for example, you go out in the woods and kill your dinner, and sometimes have a deer, that's pretty handy. And then so-and-so is willing to put somebody up overnight, and to have that kind of like resources. That's, that's pretty wonderful, to have that kind of diversity. Anything else you, somebody feels like they need to know about each other? All right, I'm guessing we've had our time together. I want to thank Jeanette for inviting me to come over. And obviously, this is the beginning for more conversations, like figure out more resources, and how to use our land, if we are lucky enough to have land, in such a way that it doesn't create problems downstream. That was a lovely line from Wendell Berry that Chris gave us, yeah. Anyway, thank you, everybody.
I'm recording this team for someone to bring this screen tangle up, and if you haven't had a chance to come look at it, please do. There's, we're kind of swoping out to the meeting, and it's really interesting to see how it's changed over time. So before we go, please take a look, and thank you all for coming.